Let's go ahead and get started. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, Dave Roseacker, Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, Robert LaRocco, Planning Board Administrator, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Debbie Hightower is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover or approval have already been heard or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cellphones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. And there are no changes to the consent agenda, so I'm going to get started reading the consent cases. Again, if you want the case removed, please stand up and we'll remove it. Agenda item number nine, case C-12-22-77, applicant John P. Farrell. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Harris Edition, a minor plat outside city limits with a waiver to Section 5384D lot frontage. Location northwest of North Post Road and 40th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 10, case C-10-21-47, C-12-21-48, applicant Woodsonia 168 State LLC. It is on for approval. Request revised preliminary plat approval of The Hill, a subdivision outside city limits, a portion of which is proposed as a cluster subdivision with rezoning from AG to DR, R4, R5, R6, and MU. Location northeast of 168 and State. Anyone wish to have this removed?
I don't want it removed, but I was wondering how we go about finding out more information about it. Is there stuff ways we could do that, or is that not something we could do?
Eric, did you want to handle this?
Yes, we can coordinate. Why don't you come down? I'll give you my business card. But yeah, we can get you all the info and the whole case file. Yep. Come on down. Yeah, just come on down now, or Larry can talk to you.
Okay, sir, so we're going to leave it on consent, correct? Okay. All right. Continuing on, agenda item number 11, case C-10-22-80, C-12-22-81, applicant Faithful Realty LLC. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Warren Place, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from GC to CC along with approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district. Location northeast of 42nd and L. Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Continue on. Case, agenda item number 13, case C-10-22-83, C-12-22-84, applicant Military and 138 Smart Development LLC. It is on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of Westbrook Hills, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to AG, DR, and R5. Location 13712 Military Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 14, case C-10-22-85, applicant Sandra Jimmerson. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GI to R5. Location 1802 Sailor Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 15, case C-10-22-86, applicant Robert Jimmerson. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GI to R5. Location 1728 Sailor Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 16, case C-10-22-87, applicant Javier Cartier. Hope I said that right. Approve, is on for approval. Request rezoning from R3 to R4. Location 13705 Corby Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 17, case C-10-22-88, applicant Sonia Marceus. It is, it is, I'm sorry, Sonia G. Marceus, SM Estate LLC. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GC to R5 with approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district. Location 3911 L. Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 18, case C-10-22-89, applicant Gregory Maylock, GAM3 Holdings LLC. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R7 to CC. Property is located within a major commercial corridor overlay district. Location 6060 Northwest Radial Highway. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 19, case C-10-22-90, applicant Timothy Garnett. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R3 and R4 to R4. Location 13545 Miami Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 20, case C-10-1-240, applicant Joshua Hanam, JEDM Holdings LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Pine Creek. Location northwest of 156th and Reynolds Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 21, case C-10-22-91, C-12-22-92, applicant Mount Maria Missionary Baptist Church. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R5 to NBD with approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location 2602 North 24th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 23, case C-8-22-93, applicant New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow a broadcast tower in the DR District along with a waiver to Section 55108 Height to allow a 100-foot-tall tower. Property is located within the Flood Fringe Overlay District. Location 4615 North 120th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item, agenda item number 27, case C-7-22-100, C-10-22-99, applicant Chad Ellington, RNA Builders. It is on for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow auto sales in the NBD with approval of the area of civic importance overlay district. Location 8505 North 30th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. And finally, agenda item number 28, case C-14-22-101, applicant Planning Board. It is on for approval. Request vacation of a portion of North 39th Street and a portion of alley right-of-way abutting lots 6, 10, and the south 25 feet of Lot 5, Block 4, Kilby Place Addition. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. For those items that are on consent for approval, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve cases number 9, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 23, 27, and 28.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Roseacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove 7-0.
Okay, there are no items on for layover. If you were here for any of the consent cases, no further action will be taken here today. You are welcome to stay, or you are welcome to leave, either one. So we'll get started with the regular agenda. The first three cases are administrative only. There will be no opportunity for public hearing. Agenda item number one, case C-10-8-220, C-12-8-221, applicant BHI Development, Inc. Request final plat approval of Kensington Park, lots 3 through 15, outlots A through C, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R6, and MU. Location northwest of 204th and Q Streets. Eric?
Yeah, so this is the third-phase final plat, although the first two phases have been quite some time back in 2009. But we have had recent revised preliminary plat action before Planning Board and City Council. This proposal was for three outlots and 13 lots. The overall site includes 92 acres and 18 mixed-use lots. There are some items that still need to be coordinated with city staff and submitted, including revised paving plan and draft subdivision agreement, and updated wetland analysis specifically as it applies to Lot 3, but also the other lots, and some additional mixed-use modifications to the plan and agreement. So for this reason, staff is recommending layover.
Okay, any additional comments, questions from the Board? Do we have a motion?
Move to layover.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Roseacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove 7-0.
Agenda item number two, case C-10-21-103, C-12-21-104, applicant M-180 LLC. Request final plat approval of Maple 180, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. Location northeast of 180th Street and West Maple Road. Eric?
Yeah, so this is the final plat for the entirety of Maple 180. It includes seven mixed-use lots, four outlots within 28 acres. The City Council approved the preliminary plat last June 29, 2021 that included a waiver of the Green Corner. However, we are recommending layover of this final plat due to there being additional items that need to be corrected and modified relating to the mixed-use development agreement and plan, which includes pedestrian-oriented open space, needs to be coordinated with city staff, additional right-of-way for Street B, and some additional sidewalk connections. So staff is recommending layover.
Comments or questions from the Board? Do we have a motion?
Move to layover. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove 7-0.
Agenda item number three, case C-10-20-252, C-12-20-253, applicant Jeffrey A. Silver, CIC Land 3 LLC. Request final plat approval of Hartwood Residences, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from R4 to R5. Location northwest of Pacific Street and Applied Parkway. Eric?
Yeah, so this final plat, Hartwood Residences, there was a previous version that came to the Planning Board previously, however, that did not advance to City Council. That original plat had 235 residential lots. That number has been reduced to 222, so we felt that change was sufficient enough that it should come back to the Planning Board. The proposed final plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plat. There is an NC overlay district plan that will accompany the final plat to City Council. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from R4 to R5, approval of the final plat subject to conditions of preliminary plat approval and submittal of an acceptable subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Okay, any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of the rezoning from R4 to R5 and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat approval and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request onto City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove 7-0.
That ends our administrative part. We'll be moving into the public hearing. Agenda item number four, case C-3-19-88, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of a major amendment to the 2019 Consolidated Action Plan. Location, City of Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. Melissa, you're up.
Good afternoon. Alyssa Selachik, City Planning Department, and I'm here to discuss a substantial or a major amendment to the 2019 Consolidated Plan. This particular proposal requests a reallocation of $2,018,000 in CDVG CB3 funds, which is CARES Act funding, from matches short-term rental assistance program to a family housing advisory services short-term rental assistance program. This part of the COVID-19 funding, this is part of the COVID-19 funding awarded to the City of Omaha. It's the third round specifically of CARES Act funding, which was designated for rental assistance only. And so the proposal here requests a reallocation of that full CB3 award. The amendment itself is a change in the administrative providers, the grant recipients of the funding, but it doesn't change the activity, the proposed number of beneficiaries, or the specific funding amount for rental assistance. So staff do recommend approval of this item, and I am available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the Board? Eric, did you want to add anything?
No, just recommend approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to move to layover.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove 7-0.
Agenda item number five, case C-3-22-73, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the South Omaha Spring Lake CRA. Location, an area generally bound by Interstate 80 to the north, F Street and Spring Lake Drive to the south, 13th Street to the east, and 24th Street to the west. And Don, you're up.
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, City Planning Department. This South Omaha Spring Lake CRA item on your agenda asks you to consider recommending the designation of a portion of the city as a community redevelopment area. We refer to it as a CRA. Before I really get into it, I think I'll start with this map and talk about the general context of the area. State law allows us to designate up to 35% of the city's land area as a community redevelopment area. The areas in lavender here are already designated as CRAs, and they represent about 20% of the city's land area. The area we are looking at today specifically, and it's defined in your study, is located roughly right here. I'll have a more detailed map. You can see it's surrounded on three sides by existing CRA already. And here is the study area. We use census geography generally to do our analysis. There are three block groups in Census Track 25. We are including two of them in the study area, and that's the area that's recommended for designation. Now, to be eligible for designation as a community, well, the reason we look at designating areas as CRAs is that we want to stimulate additional, maybe a faster pace, of economic redevelopment opportunities in the area and see if we can get some more activity. This study was launched at the request of a developer who has a project in the area. He hopes to use the TIF program and thinks he'll need to use the TIF program to make that project possible, and it is the availability of TIF within a CRA that is the primary purpose of designating a CRA. That property the developer's interested in is along 13th Street down on this end of the study area. Under state law, a CRA is called an area that is blighted and substandard. Not exactly a phrase we prefer in city planning. We prefer to consider it an area that could use some additional economic incentives for redevelopment. But anyway, blighted and substandard is what we have to live with in the state law, and there are very long and specific, maybe a bit convoluted definitions of both of those terms. The study that you have in your packets that's available to the public online has those definitions in full, and you have to meet both of those definitions to be eligible for designation as a CRA. But you know, you look at those definitions, they're long and complex, really in a broad overview. A CRA is an area where the buildings and infrastructure are older, maybe a bit worn and substandard, and where the resident population is economically disadvantaged as compared to the rest of the city as a whole, looking primarily there at things like per-capita income and unemployment rates. I'll begin with the term blighted, and blighted Part B has five criteria to it. There are measurable criteria. To be eligible, you only need to meet one of these criteria. Those criteria are population change, a stable and declining population, per-capita income, where it's lower than the city overall, unemployment, where the unemployment rate is greater than the city overall, age of structures, structures, are they generally 40 years old or older? And are there subdivided and platted lands that have been not developed and sat-platted for, you know, a number of decades? In this instance, the study area meets two of the criteria. Per-capita income for the city is $33,401. For the two block groups that we looked at, Block Group 2 and 3, the per-capita income was $29,000 and $17,000, so it's considerably lower than the $33,000 of the city's per-capita income overall. In terms of the age of the structures, 40 years is the threshold. The average age of the structures in this area readily exceeds 80 years. So it, the area qualifies in terms of meeting Part B blighted definition. Now, the definition of substandard and the Part A blighted, there's considerable overlap, but those focus more on the condition of the built environment. By that, I mean the infrastructure and the buildings within the area. Now, are they worn? Are they older? And we have two tools that we use to measure that. It's a little more subjective, I guess, than the quantifiable census data, but we use windshield surveys. We drive the area, take a look at each and every parcel, every street. So we do the windshield surveys. We also use the county assessor's building data. They have rankings of building conditions, and those rankings go from very good, good, average, fair, poor, and worn out. In this area, I'd say is approximately 20% of the buildings were below the average ranking. In terms of the infrastructure and the windshield survey, the infrastructure is indeed substandard in many cases. Drainage is lacking. Some streets lack sidewalks. Lane widths are narrow. Pavement in some locations is deteriorated, and the road connectivity through the area, in part due to topography, is not ideal. So in terms of the physical environment and the substandard definition, planning staff also found this area to be meeting that definition. With that, our recommendation is that you approve designation of this area as a community redevelopment area.
Thank you, Don. Don, real quick, could you touch on the request for extremely blight?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
There's also another level of blight that you can designate, and that's an extremely blighted area. That has two criteria. Both of them are census data and very measurable. One is an unemployment rate that is 200% of the state, overall state unemployment rate. So that threshold, 200% of the state unemployment rate, is 6.68%. In this area, we were under 1% unemployment, so it didn't meet the extremely blighted area criteria. The second criteria is poverty rate. If the population within the area has a poverty rate, more than 20% of the population is in poverty. in poverty, as measured by the U.S. Census Bureau, then it's eligible. In this case, the two block groups had a poverty rate of 13% and 10.4%, so again, it did not meet the extremely blighted area criteria, but it does meet the community redevelopment area criteria, and that's where our recommendation is focused.
Don, just on, just a question on the criteria, on the unemployment rate particularly. That's, that's a moving nod, that's a moving number, right?
Yes.
So at what point in time do you, what data do you look at at what point in time to determine?
We use the most current data available, which for this study was the five-year American Community Survey data from the U.S. Census Bureau. And, you know, it's, it's a poor measurement at best.
Yeah.
And even at the Census Track level, that five-year ACS data from the Census Bureau, there's a fair amount of play in terms of the margin for error. When you get down to a smaller area like a block group, that margin of area error gets even bigger. So I'm always a little skeptical on the unemployment rate measurement.
Yeah.
Regardless of what they come out to be.
Yeah, I was curious, because, yeah, it could change, it could change next month.
It's in state law, and we have to use the most current data available, but it really isn't a very good measure.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
In my opinion.
Thank you, Don.
Don, I have a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
Do these tracks ever stop being considered CRA once they're designated CRA?
It is possible for the city to take action, once they're designated, they stay designated until the city council takes action to undesignate them or remove the designation, and I think we've only, I think there's only one occurrence of that, and that was the TD Ameritrade Building out west, I think.
Okay.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Any additional comments, questions? Eric, did you want to add anything?
No, just thank you, Don, for that detailed analysis on the process and criteria. Staff recommends approval of the CRA.
Okay, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 7-0.
Agenda item number six. Case C3-22-74. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha, request approval of the Shirley Tyree Theater TIF redevelopment project plan. Location: 2401 North 24th Street. And you're up again, Don.
Yes, Don Seaton, City Planning. The Shirley Tyree Theater TIF project is a building rehab project. It's located on North 24th Street, just a little south of Lake Street. The project is comprised of this building and that lot, and the vacant lot to the north. It is a historic building, built in 1914, located in a historic district. The building had been used as a preschool for a while. It's been vacant for about three years. The building is going to be thoroughly rehabbed. There'll be a new addition put on the east end of the building, the site plan. The addition is here. Addition would be about 4,300 square feet. The project's going to be a black box theater venue with flexible performance space, an audience capacity of about 190 people. It will include a ticket office, a scene shop, dressing rooms, and rehearsal space. The developer is RH Land Management LLC, managed by Susan Buffett. The developer is providing this facility, once completed, to the Union for Contemporary Arts, rent-free. Total project investment is about $20.9 million. They are requesting $354,672 in TIF support. Project meets the required criteria of our TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the area. I think it'll be a nice addition for North Omaha, and complies with the goals of the master plan. We ask for your approval. I should show a couple more pictures, I think. Here's some renderings showing the project. This is from that same perspective as the photo with the existing building here, and the addition to the east. Maybe a floor plan as well, with the seating area.
Any questions for Don? I'm sorry, I was reading part of the, okay, thank you, Don. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Michael Sands, 1700 Farnham Street, excuse me, Farnham Street, Suite 1500, on behalf of the applicant. With me are, is Bridgette McQueen, who's the director of the Union for Contemporary Arts, also Denise Chapman, who's the, directs the theater programming and development over there. Certainly, along with myself, they'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about their plans for the building. Just for a little more context, so the proposed site is directly to the south of the current Union building, so it'll really be an extension of that programming. Currently, the Union has seating capacity for about 40 individuals, like Don said. This'll increase it to 190, so it'll really enhance the capabilities of the Union to provide programming, you know, for the community, and to allow the community to come in and see the programming in bigger numbers. As Don showed, it is a historic building that'll be renovated. You know, it's not in the greatest condition now, so the renovations will be much needed along with the addition. And I guess from our perspective, and I hope from yours, the project is truly for the public benefit, which I would argue is the best use of TIF. And, you know, with that, you know, we've provided, I think, a pretty conservative valuation of what we think it'll value out at, at $1.3 million. It's sometimes tough with these kind of projects to provide valuations, because there's not a lot of comps, and this won't be income generating, so the income approach is not easy to calculate, but at $1.3 million, we think that will provide quite a bit of room and is quite conservative with respect to the $354,000 that's being requested. We are asking for 20-year TIF. It is an extremely blighted area, as Don noted on the previous agenda item we went over. With that, the goal is to be open by spring of 2023, so about a year. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Michael, it's a nice project. It is NBD, Neighborhood Business District. No parking stalls are required. 190 people. Have you talked to businesses, people around the neighborhood? You know, when you're talking, maybe 95 cars come in.
So the Union already controls three parking lots that'll remain, which would provide more than enough parking even with the NBD, you know, the NBD designation doesn't necessarily require it, but yes, there is plenty of parking within a one-block radius that the, that the Union already has the ability to use and will continue using.
Can you point those parking areas out on that map?
And that might be a better question for Bridgette, but I believe it's, you have one over here, and you have one in between the Union, and is there one across the street? Yes, you're welcome.
Good afternoon. Bridgette McQueen, I'm the executive director at the Union for Contemporary Arts. We do currently have three lots. The largest of the lots sits to the north of the intended project, between our current facility and the theater. Then there is a lot that sits just to the west, across North 24th Street from our building, and then there is a third lot that sits just to the east. It's sort of, we have a garden, it just sits right to the east of that garden. I'd also like to make a correction. The seating capacity for the theater is 92/100. I'm not sure where the 190 came, but the max capacity on the theater would be about 100 people.
Maybe that's my fault. I thought I heard.
No, I think, I think.
I thought I heard 190.
I think it was, I think it was said, but the capacity will be closer to, it will be 100 people.
I started to think, where are we going to put every car?
No, no, it's a very, it's a simple black box theater, so it'll be flexible seating, but 100 would be the max comfortably seated in the space.
Thank you for that clarification.
No trouble. Were there any other questions for me?
I'm good. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
I'll just say before you go, Bridgette, I just want to commend you and Denise, I see you back there, and any other Union staff that's here for your creativity and your vision and your commitment to strengthening such an important corridor in North Omaha. You should be commended over and over, and so I hope you just continue to shine with what you've done and then also this project.
Thank you, Sidney. Thank you so much, and thank you for your consideration. I do appreciate it.
Bridgette, could you just say your address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's 2423 North 24th Street.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, oh.
Nope, just grabbing.
Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close public hearing. Additional comments, questions? Eric, did you want to add anything?
Just, you know, there's a lot of exciting things happening on North 24th Street, so this is another great example, so we're excited for this project to come to fruition. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have a motion? Debbie, we have a motion and a second. Please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosenbaum?
Yes.
Approve 7-0.
Okay, moving on. Agenda item number seven, case C3-22-75. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha, request approval of the Flats on Howard Expansion TIF redevelopment project plan. Location: 2240 Landon Court and 2323 Howard Street. And Don, you're up again.
Yes, making myself at home. Flats on Howard Expansion TIF project, two lots, south and east of 24th and Howard, towards the western part of Central Business District. It's comprised of two lots. One is presently a surface parking lot. The other is occupied by a building that has been, that has been previously used by the Nebraska Urban Indian Health Center. They are moving to a new location, so the existing structure is going to be demolished, the site cleared, and a new six-story apartment building will be constructed. This is a massing study, and it's this property here. These are some existing buildings that give you a little context. Six-story apartment building with 120 market rate rental units. They'll be located on floors three through six of the building. The first two floors will have, will be two levels of parking, approximately 132 parking stalls. Those first two floors will also include the leasing office and a workout facility. This property, like the previous item, is located in an extremely blighted area, and they're requesting a 20-year TIF term, tax increment financing term, and the increment they're showing for the building does support that request. The developer is 2323 Howard Street LLC. It's managed by Todd Heastead. Total project investment in the neighborhood in downtown is approximately $27.9 million. They're requesting $3,282,000 in TIF support. And again, the project meets the required criteria of our TIF program. It's an appropriate use for the area, complies with the goals of the city's master plan, and we ask for your approval. I might show a couple more images here. Elevation, site plan, kind of a U-shaped or J-shaped building. All right, thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Good afternoon. Greg Rothenmel, New Style Development, 2223 Dodge Street, here to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you, Greg. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Additional comments, questions? Eric, do you want to add?
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 7-0.
Agenda item number eight, case C3-22-76. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha, request approval of the MH Landing Lot 5 TIF redevelopment project plan. Location: 3321 South 72nd Street. And Don, you're up again.
Yes, good afternoon again. Don Seaton, City Planning Department. The MH Landing Lot 5 TIF redevelopment project plan is a proposal for a new office building with some warehouse storage. It's located, as mentioned, 3321 South 72nd Street. That's basically Grover and 72nd. It's on the site, a very large lot previously that was occupied by the Ramada Inn Convention Center and Cocoa Keys Water Park. You may recall, ignore the notes for a moment, a replat for this property that came through not too very long ago, where that entire property was divided up into six lots, and we approved a TIF project on this L-shaped lot, that's a hotel. Lot 5, and that's Lot 4. Lot 5 that we're looking at today is this parcel here, and that's intended to be a headquarters building for Dan Merrick and his Merrick Hospitality. He's the one who has developed, is developing the hotel on Lot 4, and has developed numerous other hotels in the Omaha, Omaha Market at various locations. Okay, so the building will be a one-story building with basement, about 5,660 square feet. About 2,100 square feet of that will be, and that's all mostly office, about 2,100 square feet will be storage area. It's kind of a support area for Mr. Merrick's hotel operation. Total project cost is $2,689,000. They're asking for $390,000 in TIF support for a 15-year TIF term. Project complies with the master plan, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents? I see Brent headed this way.
I think those are mine. You don't give far. No. Thank you. Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. Oh, those are yours, then? You're welcome. You're not going far. So the only thing I was going to touch on, Don did a good job. This is kind of cool, because Dan Merrick has done a number of hotels in and around the Omaha area, so now, and a lot of those hotels were supported by TIF, and he's actually relocating his business operations and his management company to Omaha, so with this building, you know, 25 new jobs will be coming. So another good incentive as to why we use TIF. There's always random benefits, and one of the benefits is new jobs here. So we're excited about this. This is a phased TIF project. There'll be maybe another one going on Lot 6, which won't be Mr. Merrick, he'll probably be an apartment developer, and then there'll be two more retail sites left over on this project. So with that, we're here for any questions. We appreciate your support.
Thank you, Brent. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Additional comments or questions?
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 7-0.
We're going to take cases 12 and 24 together. Agenda item number 12, case C12-22-82. Applicant, city of Omaha, request preliminary and final. Request preliminary and final plat approval of northeast joint-use facility two, a minor plat inside city limits. Location, southeast of Twentieth and Ogden Street. And agenda item number twenty-four is case, excuse me, case C eight dash twenty-two dash ninety-six. Applicant, City of Omaha. Request approval of a large project special use, special use permit to allow maintenance and service facilities over ten acres in the G.I. district. Location, southeast of Twentieth and Ogden Streets. And who's presenting? Okay.
Good afternoon. Dustin Shropshire, RW Engineering and Surveying, seven-five-two-five, North Hundred and First Street here in Omaha. With me today is Mike Eastman and Austin Rousler from Public Works to help answer any questions that you might have. All right. The proposed improvements are an expansion of the current joint-use facility. The expansion will include a chain-link fence along the perimeter of the property. The area within the fencing will include a sixty-foot buffer yard of landscaping. Within the expanded area, there'll be no new buildings or significant improvements, only the storage of materials, including asphalt grappings, clean dirt, brick, rubble, rock, and granite curb. The landscaping requirements shall be met by providing a buffer and screening from adjacent residential uses. Traffic may include light duty and heavy-duty trucks entering the, entering the site from the current property. So there's no expected adverse traffic on the surrounding streets. The hours of operation are gonna remain consistent with the current operating hours. And if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Dustin. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, a closed public hearing? Comments, questions? Eric, did you wanna add anything?
Yeah, I just mentioned a few things just to differentiate between the two. We'll have to take separate motions and votes. Agenda item twelve is the smaller two-and-a-half acre that Dustin is showing with the site plan here, the expanded area. So that's, you know, creating one plat. There are some vacations of right-of-way, including Ogden, portions of Ogden, Twentieth Street in the east-west alley. But there is a new north-south alley that's being provided. And of course, you see the, the new cul-de-sac on Ogden that provides turnaround for, for access for the public. Agenda item twenty-four is major amendment to the assumed large project special use permit. Although this use is permitted in the industrial zoning because it's over ten acres in size and it's a civic use, it requires that amendment for this new enlarged area to, to include this two-and-a-half acres with the larger site. So unless you have any questions, of course, we have the experts here from Public Works with their facility. I will make a recommendation for agenda item twelve. Approval of the preliminary plat, subject to compliance with all stormwater management ordinances and policies. Approval of the final plat, subject to the condition of preliminary plat approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve of the preliminary plat, subject to compliance with all stormwater management ordinance and policies, and approval of the final plat, subject to the condition of preliminary plat approval.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose, uh, Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven zero.
For agenda item twenty-four, staff recommends approval of the large project special use permit to allow maintenance and service facilities over ten acres in size in the G.I. district, subject to the four conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the large project special use permit to allow maintenance and service facilities over ten acres in the G.I. district, subject to meeting the four items in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Dustin. Agenda item number twenty-two, case C eight dash nineteen dash one fifty-nine. Applicant, Kids Can Community Center. Request approval of a major amendment to the special use permit to allow daycare general in the R-four district. Location, forty-seven sixty-eight Q Street. And may we hear from the applicant, please?
Hello, Brian Ackert, one-one-nine South Forty-Eighth, or Forty-Ninth Avenue. Just to give a little background on the project. I'm here to answer any questions as well. But Kids Can Community Center originally came a couple years ago to get a special use permit for a daycare use on this site. So we did go through that process, but at the time, we didn't have quite all the design specifics figured out. So here I am today to discuss signage for a major amendment to that special use permit. Just a little bit of background on the site itself. The building is located here. North is to the up, this direction. Forty-eighth Street and Q is over on this side. The only spot that we can actually enter the site is off of Weir Street. You kinda come around the block there due to grade, as well as a large stabilized slope and a retaining wall that's over here off of Forty-eighth and Weir Streets. So what we're looking at doing is trying to get any sort of visitors. Kids Can Community Center, I should mention, there is a daycare component, as well as a community center opponent and an after-school, out-of-school programming that occurs at the, at the site as well. There's outdoor play spaces here, as well as here. But from that community center standpoint, we're trying to get visitors to get to the front door. So from a signage standpoint, we do wanna capture traffic. There's a large gymnasium that's located here and along Q Street. So having two wall signs on either side of that to catch both sides of the Q Street traffic, but then also a monument sign to identify the main entry from a curb-cut standpoint, then also a canopy sign right at the front door. So looking at a few signage elevations here. This is the sign we're looking for, as well as a few elevations. Again, this is the gym graphics over here on this side. This is the side that faces north, so that canopy sign to kind of bring visitors to the front door. And then we do have a couple renderings as well to kinda show what that looks like in context with everything as well. So again, a large gym that faces Q Street, and then the front door is facing north where the surface parking is located. So happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Brian, just a real quick question for you. I'm trying to find on the site plan here. How big is that building gonna be?
About twenty-seven thousand square feet.
Twelve, okay. Pretty good size.
Yeah, a little bit bigger than a typical R-four building.
Yeah. All right. Nice project, by the way.
Thank you, Brian.
Great, thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, a closed public hearing? Additional comments or questions? Eric?
Yeah, so Brian gave a, a good summary. Specifically, the, the following waivers are, are necessary. Total allowed sign budget, maximum allowed square footage per wall sign, overall height of a wall sign, and then minimum setback for a monument sign. With this being a civic use in residential zoning, the signage standards are fairly restrictive in our zoning code. That is something that we're potentially looking at modifying moving forward. But for that reason, we are supportive of three of the four waivers. The one that staff is not comfortable with is the setback for the monument sign. There's no, staff does not view the hardship or practical difficulty. So we are saying that that monument sign in the northeast corner should meet the setback, but we are comfortable with all of the other waivers. This would, if approved by the planning board, would also need to go to the zoning board of appeals for such waivers. You can ask questions as follow-up, but staff recommends approval of the major amendment to the special use permit to allow daycare general in the R-four district, subject to the five conditions listed in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the major amendment to the special use permit to allow daycare general in the R-four district, subject to the five conditions outlined in the recommendation report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven zero.
Agenda item number twenty-five, case C eight dash twenty-one dash one fifty, C eight dash twenty-one dash one fifty-eight, C ten dash twenty-one dash one forty-nine. App, excuse me. Applicant, Nebraska HBP A, request approval of a major amendment to the special use permits assumed to allow indoor entertainment and outdoor entertainment in the G.I. district, with approval of a major amendment to the large project special use permit assumed, along with approval of the MCC overlay district. Property is located within the flood fringe and floodway overlay districts. Location, sixty-three oh-three Q Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. Lynn McNally appearing on behalf of the applicant, Nebraska Horseman, six-three oh-three Q Street. This was already approved by you. If you recall, the change that we made is to add a parking garage. There were one thousand four hundred and twenty-one stalls that were required on the site for the building that we're constructing. What we're planning on is nine hundred surface stalls and then an additional seven hundred in the parking garage. Due to the limitations of the property itself, we felt that this was the most efficient way to achieve the parking goal, to go above the parking goal, but still have room to move around and get done the things we needed to do, so.
Any questions for Lynn? Thank you.
Timeline.
Timeline is, we are anxiously awaiting the governor to sign rules and regs so we can get the license process going. If he approves in the next month or so, which I'm hoping he will, then I would say that we would have licenses in hand sometime in May, and we'll be breaking ground the moment that we have the license in hand. So we are ready, willing, and able to construct. Right now, actually, there's activity going on because you had already approved dragging water and sewer out to the infield and electricity so that we can keep simulcasting going in temporary buildings on the infield while we gut the inside of the building and make it beautiful and new. So actually, if you drive by there right now, there's activity going on right now, which is very exciting for us. We, we can't wait. Lincoln's on a similar timeline. We're, we're gonna be, the construction trailer's out there already. So we're just literally waiting for that license to be in hand, and, and we'll be off and going. Can't wait.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here it is. Did you, did you give us that Warhorse name previously, or is that new?
Um, that's, it's incorporated from the whole time, but now we're officially going forward as Warhorse.
I thought it, I didn't remember seeing that before.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Warhorse Lincoln, Warhorse Omaha.
Good.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, a closed public hearing? Any additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, so Lynn gave a, a nice summary of, of the changes. So I don't need to rehash. You know, it was last June that you originally had the, the use permits. A few items, you know, development team will continue to coordinate with us on the development, or floodplain development permits. There's an administrative plat that'll be required with the adjacent property to the east, as well as a minor amendment. And then some finalization of acceptable urban design building codes related to the garage. So with that being said, we do have a lot of different conditions. It kinda repeats itself for the three different use permits. So we will, Jennifer?
Take them in three motions, or?
Yeah, I don't know if you have thoughts, if we need three separate motions and votes, or if I can just read them all together. We have, of course, there's the MCC overlay, and then there's a large project special use permit. Then there's a special use permit for the indoor entertainment, and then a special use permit for the outdoor entertainment.
Let's just take them as three separate votes to be safe.
Okay. Sounds good. So I will loop the MCC overlay with the large project as the first motion. So staff recommends approval of the MCC overlay district and approval of the large project special use permit subject to the thirteen conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the MCC major commercial corridor overlay district to, and also to approve the large project special use permit subject to the following thirteen conditions in the report.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven zero.
Staff recommends approval of the special use permit to allow indoor entertainment, subject to the thirteen conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the special use permit to allow...
Indoor entertainment, subject to the following thirteen conditions.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven zero.
And the final one, approval of the special use permit to allow outdoor entertainment, subject to the thirteen conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval of the special use permit to allow outdoor entertainment, subject to the thirteen conditions outlined in the recommendation report.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven zero.
Agenda item number twenty-six, case C eight dash twenty-two dash ninety-eight, C seven dash twenty-two dash ninety-seven. Applicant, Chase Gallic, request approval of a major amendment to the large project special use permit assumed to allow meatpacking and related industries in the H.I. district, along with approval of a parking adjustment for a mixed-use development. Section fifty-five dash seven thirty-six. Location, southwest of Thirty-third Street and Edward Babe Gomez Avenue. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Trevor Vescrana with TD two, one-zero-eight-three-six, Old Mill Road. I'm here with the applicant, Chase Gallic. He's here to answer any questions as well. We're seeking the approval for a parking adjustment and a major amendment to the special use permit, to construct a new cooler addition right here, as well as a new employee parking lot right here. I'm happy to answer any questions if you've got them.
Any questions? Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments?
Yeah, we talked through most of the details in the pre-meeting. You know, as Trevor mentioned, cooler addition, as well as the parking, new parking lot. You know, just a brief overview of the parking. There is a lease agreement with a Guacamaya restaurant and dance club that's located southeast of the site. They have been leasing parking stalls from this restaurant since two thousand and ten, and they have extended that. You know, the times are complimentary and different times for the meat processing facility as compared to the restaurant and dance club. So, we are supportive of both the large project major amendment, as well as the parking adjustment. If you have any questions on specific details, please let me know. Otherwise, staff recommends approval of the parking adjustment for a mixed-use development, approval of a major amendment to the large project special use permit, assumed to allow meatpacking and related industries in the HI district, subject to the seven conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the parking adjustment for a mixed-use development and approval of a major amendment to the large project special use permit, to allow meatpacking and related industries in the HI district, subject to the seven items in the staff report.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve seven zero.
Agenda item number twenty-nine, case C fourteen dash twenty-two dash one oh two. Applicant Planning Board, request vacation of a portion of alley, alley right-of-way between twelfth and thirteenth streets, and between Pierce and Pacific Streets. Eric, are you presenting, or?
Yeah, so I will start this off. City Planning and Public Works had received a request from one of the adjacent property owners to vacate this east-west alley, unimproved alley right-of-way, with a portion of, basically the eastern half, I will roughly say, to go to the adjacent hardware facility, with the western half going to the requesting party. In our recommendation report, we had originally stated that we felt the property at twelve seventeen Pacific should be awarded, given, you know, vacated to that property that's adjacent. Since that time, we have received some correspondence, so I guess I would like to hear all the parties, and if we can go from there on some of the further details.
Sounds good. Do we have any other proponents wishing to speak?
Tom Elisma, eleven oh three, eleven oh seven, eleven oh nine. Eleven oh nine is the adjacent property to the alley. I am the one that started this process, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Do you have a map with you?
Yeah, for sure. It would be, sorry, these three properties, the alleyway right there.
Yeah, so Tom owns all three properties that are fronting thirteenth street.
Yep.
Okay. All right, any questions for Tom?
Tom, I have a question.
Yeah.
What if this area was vacated? Do you have intentions for the alley right-of-way, or just to, for ownership?
Yeah, ownership, basically, you know, I mean, if it's able to be developed, then, you know, if we can, as I own that property, if later on down the road, if I can develop that area, for sure.
Thank you, Tom. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Good afternoon, Ron Hackett, three five one five Oak Ridge Road, RGH Design, architect for the project, right adjacent to Tom's place at twelve seventeen Pacific Street. And I'm not necessarily against the vacation of the alley. I'm more just concerned that we maintain access to our property through that alley. We have, in the design of the new structure that is being built, we've designed, where the red dot is there, is the alley side, and that's where the transformer will be for the project. Currently, the screen walls that are poured in place concrete are already in place, as well, as well as the trench and conduit for the power that gets there. Just concerned about access for maintenance in the future, and access for being able to build our project that is, really, that's a tight site, and the alley is crucial for the builders to get back there and bring materials in and out of the site. As well, Tom, not sure who's, what's this gonna cost? I'm all for building, and I'm all for Tom to develop something. I think that'd be great. Just, but, but shutting off access is a big concern. So, that's what I'm up to today, and just something I think we all need to discuss.
I assume your only access right now is on Pacific Street, right?
We have, the main entry for the project is off of Pacific Street, which is on this side, and the main driveway in, the main entry is right here, and then we get up and into the building. And like I said, the red dot is where our transformer will be, and in the future, OPPD will probably need to get to that, and/or replace it somewhere down the road.
And you can't, and you're, excuse me, and is your parking gonna be on street, then?
Parking is actually underneath the building. This is all parking on here, and this is, the building actually floats, if you want to say that. It's appeared to float above the parking. Interesting, so.
Yeah, Ron, which way does that transformer face for OPPD's access?
Oh, for them to open it?
Yes, they have to have that clearance in front of the transformer, so.
We have the clearances around it, it's just, we have these shielding screen walls that are poured there.
More likely it'll open to, OPPD will set it to the south, more than likely.
That's my, that's exactly my point.
Yeah.
Because then, they have to have access through that, to that location.
They would, and right now, we, it's building, it's all above it, so.
Yeah, but it's an alley now, so they could get to it, so.
The only way to it would be the alley.
Yeah, it would be the alley, right. Good point, Dave.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, Ron, I have a few questions.
Yes.
Remind me, how many units, again?
Six.
Okay, six. I have heard, does the building encroach into the current alley right-of-way?
We have...
This particular stem wall was poured eight inches into the alley.
And currently, this hatched part is a lease that we have set up with the city for a sidewalk back there, and I've visited with Ryan Haas about it. He was fine with us incorporating that little eight-inch stem wall into the lease, or we can cut it off. It does nothing, other than it's a screen.
Okay, that's a sidewalk or steps back there that you have the lease for?
Yes, this is the lease.
Or, do you have the lease yet, or is it?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I knew that was a comment from the building permit. So, you can either, well, if the right-of-way was vacated, of course, that could become your property, but if not, you're saying that it can either be incorporated into the lease, or it could be cut off?
That's right. It's, it's just a screen wall, it's concrete, we just take a saw and cut it off, so. And, yeah, it was a mistake that the foundation company poured it eight inches out into the alley. Don't know why, so.
Okay.
Yeah?
So, in the case of the...
That's better than what I thought.
I could ask a question, Eric. In the case of a vacation, if there's a standing lease like that, does that go with that, with that vacation? Does it continue, or what happens to that lease?
Well, the lease would effectively go away, if it becomes part of their property. And that would be my understanding, I don't, you know.
Well, no, I'm saying if, if a third party acquired the alley.
So, you're saying if the requesting party, Tom?
Right.
Was given that portion of the alley, well, that complicates things, because there's no longer a lease agreement with the city, because we're not the owners of the alley anymore.
But sometimes leases move along, you know, with a change in title.
I'm not aware of any transfer of city leased property to a private company. I will look to the law department for any other thoughts or opinions, and Dave, yeah.
If we no longer own the property, there's no mechanism by which that any existing lease would transfer.
I just don't understand it, because if I own a property and it has some sort of a lease on it, you have the option to either sell that with a lease in place or not.
But the city has different rules with how we lease our property pursuant to city code, so those, that doesn't always necessarily transfer in the same manner.
I have one more question.
We might have others here to speak on this, but I guess, let me just give a, just touch on the process. So, this is on the agenda as a planning board-initiated vacation, which means that through that process, you know, planning board, city staff making recommendation, ultimately city council approving, has the ability to divide up the vacated area in any manner that they see fit, okay? So, when you have a petition-based vacation request, that would be when, let's say you had a hundred percent of the abutting property owners to the right-of-way requesting that to be vacated, it's automatically split fifty-fifty based on the adjacent ownership. That's also the way it's done when you have a plat, when a vacated area is included in the plat, unless somebody is signing their rights away by signing the plat. So, it's kind of unique, and that was part of our recommendation report. We had talked about splitting up so that it didn't all go to Tom, you know, the property owners along thirteenth street, but rather have that segment go to twelve seventeen Pacific. But, you know, we obviously had some concerns about hearing that maybe the building was in that alley, and then obviously, we hear concerns about accessing in the transformer, so I guess, I'd continue and hear who else has to speak on it.
Thank you, Ron. Are there any other opponents wishing to speak?
Cindy Christensen, twelve sixteen Pierce Street. I just want to express my concern that my property is, the back of that will be split in the alleyway between Johnson Hardware, and it's behind the new construction. And so, maintaining that with two different property owners is my concern. The Pierce Street is quite steep. This is my house, right here, twelve sixteen Pierce. And so, it's just the, maintaining the property between the different owners. This is Johnson Hardware, which on this map, looks like they will own most of it. But, that's my concern, is where that, where that ownership will be.
So, this map represents the original request, and so the green area would go to Johnson Hardware, the blue area was asked to go to Tom Elisma.
Okay, and that's, and I'm, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to find out who's gonna be responsible for maintaining that, because of the steepness of that alleyway.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
I'm sorry, I couldn't get here any earlier, but my name's John Schmidt, nineteen forty, South Forty-Ninth Street, and I'm the owner of twelve twenty-six Pierce Street. And I believe you all received my email, it was forwarded to you, that I am interested in purchasing my half. Apparently, I'm allowed to have half of that twenty-foot right-of-way, and, and that's what I am requesting, that apparently it gets appraised, and the adjacent property owners get a chance to purchase that vacated alleyway, and I want to do that, which is adjacent to my property. And the green area, the green section here, is Johnson Hardware getting all of that, or?
That was the request, yes.
And, and that's okay with all four of these property owners?
I don't know, I don't know if there's anybody else to come up and speak.
Yeah, we don't know that yet, so.
But, yeah, we did notify all of the adjacent property owners with this request, so I'm not sure.
So, I believe my property is eighty-seven feet deep, so what I would be requesting, then, is eighty-seven feet times the ten-foot width, is that correct? Okay.
I think that's what you're asking for, yeah.
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 And that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, John. Any other opponents?
Hi, Jamie Troba, twelve twenty Pierce Street, and so this is my property here. Generally, I'm, generally, Tom and his wife have been good neighbors, the architects have been very responsive to our concerns throughout this whole process. But, in general, when public lands are being vacated, I, I would like to see it divided evenly among the properties interested, rather than it going to one wealthier development entity. As it stands, the red transformer that you saw earlier on one of the maps is right, just about right up against my fence line there, and so I, I would feel that my husband and I should have access to some of that land as well, if we wished it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Yes, Tom, did you want to come up and?
So, again, Tom Elisma, eleven oh three, eleven oh seven, eleven oh nine, South Thirteenth Street. So, when this whole, this came about, I was put in touch with Crystal Roberts, who helped guide me through this whole process. And initially, I, we thought we had to go, I'd have to go through a petition and go to all the neighbors, and to come to find out, with what we found out with them building over the property line, and they did a little bit more investigation with some other properties up the line, with, there was fences built over the, over into the alleyway as well, that we wouldn't need to do the petition. Then it came, and then I thought, well, okay, great, then all the properties would get split up equally. Well, no, that's not the case. The way it was explained to me was that I'd have to buy, purchase the entire alleyway, and then I would divvy it up amongst whoever wanted it. So, you know, in about each of the properties, to buy that portion for the Pierce side, the smaller properties, I'd imagine they're gonna be somewhere between fifteen to two thousand dollars per piece to buy, it's gonna add to your taxes. I wasn't for sure, because I was trying to get on this month's meeting, I wasn't for sure if everybody would come to agreement on that. So, I have some emails with Crystal, explained to her that maybe it's just easier if I went to Johnson, I knew, I knew Johnson's owner, if we can just split the costs, and then I would be willing to go back at the, on the backside, and then let whoever wanted to buy their portion. I didn't want to really have it all jogged up, if possible, if we could come to agreement after the fact. But, of course, yours is an easy one, that your ten-foot, it sounds like the value's usually around three to, three to twenty-five per square, three dollars and twenty-five cents per square foot. So, I think after the fact, I am one hundred percent fine with chopping up this piece as is. So, hopefully that answers your questions, yeah. And, and along with yours, like if you wanted to, if you guys needed to buy ten-foot of that section, totally fine. We just thought it would be a lot easier to do it all after the fact.
So, I've got a question with regards to the, to the property to your, I guess it would be your east there. Then, if they need access to that transformer?
Yep.
In there, even if you did do that, and you decided at some point in time to start building or develop that area, then, how would they get the access to that transformer?
So, what is your, what's your side yard between Johnson and your building?
Five B.
Yeah. How big is the transformer?
Transformer's about five foot by six foot.
Yeah. So, there's access, in terms of changing it out would be an issue. Yeah, that would be the issue of changing it out, so, you know, I, the only way I'd see it, which I had to use on my project quite a bit, was like a crane to get, to move something around.
And so, you initiated this?
Yes.
This, right?
Yep.
What was your, what was the purpose of the initiation? Because I'm looking at it right now, saying, just leave it vacated.
Right.
Right? There's so many parties in this thing, it just makes more sense to leave it vacated at this point, so.
Leave it as right.
Yeah, leave it as right-of-way, there, right.
So, the other question?
So, let me, let him answer that question, though, first.
You know, I think that...
Why did you initiate?
I initiated, because it just seems like the alleyway is so, it's underutilized, it's just kind of land sitting there. It's never accessed, other than during your construction. So, I was just thinking that it would be, you know, better use to sell it off, the city selling it to us, becoming, you know, taxed land, and someday, you know, developing that land into something.
All right. Okay, with an alley in place, isn't there a utility easement down that alley anyway for the, for power?
Public Works would retain, if vacated, Public Works would retain all utility easements in place.
Which would then still retain access to that.
Well, that's, that's to allow the city access to the utilities, that doesn't allow private members to use it for access.
OPPD, is that who I'm talking about?
Ryan Haas is shaking his head, OPPD. So, we have Ryan Haas and Crystal Roberts from Public Works, if we do want to call them up.
Well, I know if I encroach on the, on the utility easements on my own property, and I put something on there, the utility, if it's in the way, has the right to take it out, because I'm supposed to keep that area clear.
Can I just make a suggestion? There's a lot of questions here, and rather than us trying to get into the weeds and work this out, work this out on all the different things, I think the best thing is maybe to do a layover and let the planning department work out a lot of these questions, and then bring it back to us.
Yeah.
Because we're getting, we're getting into the weeds a little bit here.
Well, absolutely, I was going to, to lay, to recommend layover. You're getting to the point, though, where it almost makes sense to do the fifty-fifty, or the petition. You need seventy-five percent ownership, I believe, right, Crystal? Yeah, seventy-five percent of abutting property owners to sign on, I mean, you're, you might be there. I mean, it sure sounds like it, that would divide up, that would take care of... That would divide up, that would take care of, I mean, it doesn't take care of the access to get to the transformer. I don't know, I'd have to, you know, speak further with Ron. So, yes, I agree, the layover makes sense. If everybody wants to come in and meet with Planning and Public Works, that's probably the best case, because it's not going to get figured out today, as we sit here.
I'm going to close the public, I already did close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions? Eric, did you want to add anything?
I was just going to ask, Ryan or Crystal, did you want to add anything, or we can recommend a layover, and hopefully, we can all get together and meet. So they shook their heads no, so staff recommends layover.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to layover.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Franklin? Moore? Morris? Pate? Sotolongo? Rosacker? Mr. Chair? Approve 7-0.
Good luck, guys.
Maybe if everybody could come down and provide an email on a back of that agenda, and then we can help the outreach. Thank you.
Do we have a motion for approval on last month's pre-meeting minutes and public meeting minutes?
To approve the pre-meeting and public meeting minutes from March.
22?
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Moore? Morris? Pate? Sotolongo? Rosacker? Franklin? Mr. Chair? Approve 7-0.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Morris? Pate? Sotolongo? Rosacker? Franklin? Moore? Mr. Chair? Approve 7-0. Hey.